Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I'm welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting, or Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 19, 2023. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please get again called the role.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Ganzie?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Report absent. Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our Committee of the Whole Meeting's meeting is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. Tonight we have one item. It is a topic of discussion. The petitioner is requesting a concept plan review to amend the annexation agreement and plan development, re-designate the property at the northeast corner of Miles Parkway and West Bartlett Road to develop Area One, allow the construction of a building and contractor yard for landscaping contractor, Allen Horticulture. The 15,600 square foot building includes office space as well as 11,600 square feet for truck repair for the company's vehicles. The proposed elevations would be comprised of precast panels with windows and entrances facing Miles Parkway and West Bartlett Road. The fenced contractor's yard contains a fueling station, 43 parking spaces for landscaping equipment, and vehicles to accommodate approximately 73 landscape trucks and trailers with double parked as plan specifies, a covered nursery stack, and 12 storage bays for landscaping materials. The West Bartlett Road corridor plan identifies this property as being the prestigious Western Gateway. The design guidelines for the corridor plan propose office buildings to be located near the landscape buffer along West Bartlett Road, and that building material shall be combined with a mixture of materials such as stone, masonry, brick, siding, and glazing. Office parking and service areas should be screened from view of the corridors and truck doors, and loading areas should be screened from the view of West Bartlett Road. And with that, I will turn it over to Kristy Stone for some more details.
So the full town business park was annexed in 2003. As part of the development agreement, the property was divided into four development areas. Each development area has its own set of uses that are permitted. The properties along West Bartlett Road were designated for commercial uses only. The applicant is now requesting to change the development area so that Development Area One will go south all the way to West Bartlett Road. This is directly across from the Bartlett Point West subdivision. So because this is a change from what their development, planned development zoning allows, we wanted the board to give us feedback before we had them go through the full development application process. So landscape yards are only permitted in industrial districts, so that use would be prohibited here the way it stands now.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think we're probably talking about, there's a few of them around here, right? Like, there's one on Lake Street that's been really active. Can't remember what it's called.
Seabert?
No, Seabert's actually a commercial place. The one on Lake Street on that-
Platt Hill.
Platt Hill. Yeah, is that where we're talking, was it similar to that?
This will be more like what Seabert is. So it's more like Seabert where they do commercial landscape projects.
Okay.
The applicants are here.
Is it open for, will it be open for retail, people to come in and buy mulch and, no?
No, it's mainly a contractor's yard, so they have most of their trucks stored there. They don't really have a lot of landscape product.
Okay.
Do you see any issues with the way the site plan is?
Staff had some concerns about what materials were going to be stored, if there was going to be any sort of odor. We've had complaints before. If they have, like, decomposing materials, that that could affect the residents.
Did you guys work that out?
The applicants are here. So we have standards. They said that they would meet them, but we have nothing at this point verifying that.
Have there been any other interests? I know that Mr. Kelly's here. Is there any other interests in, or plans or anything for that site? Because it's right, right along the DNR property line, right?
Correct. We have not had any applications for this property since 2003.
Yeah.
And what, do we anticipate the truck, additional truck traffic then on West Bartlett Road?
It would be like their landscape vehicles, yes.
Yeah.
The storage of the trucks, what are the plans for the business during the winter months?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Dean Kelly, I'm the petitioner, Abbott-Landon Investment Corporation. I have with me Dan Huber. He owns the business, Allen Horticulture. And the architect is Chuck Smith, and I'm going to butcher the name even though he told me, Arte III. And they've done a number of buildings in Brewster Creek. You're probably, a lot of you are probably familiar with them. So any specific questions for the operation, you know, Dan can obviously answer those. And then as far as the design, Chuck can do that. It's, and you know, you can also talk about the traffic, but it's very similar to Seabert. They're a commercial landscaping company. As you can see on the plan, you know, the, the storage of materials is at the far north end of the site. That's obviously well buffered by the building, other landscaping. It's right next to the traffic control and protection yard. And it's really a minor amount. It's around the perimeter. You know, they have bins for, say, mulch and, you know, some occasional, you know, some landscape stock. They have a couple areas that will have concrete pads for salt. And then most of the rest of the yard is, is for the, the trucks that will then go out and service their clients. So not, not a big traffic generator. You know, obviously, this isn't a truck terminal or anything where they're coming in and out all the time, you know, kind of out in the morning and back at night. But again, but again, Dan can kind of explain more of the details if you need him to.
Where's the business at now?
Yeah, I'll bring Dan up. He's got a couple locations. And one of the reasons for doing this is to consolidate everything.
Hi, good evening, everyone. The business right now operates in Batavia at Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road. We also have a location in Hampshire, Illinois, as well as our corporate offices are in a office building in Warrenville, Illinois. So we're essentially looking for Bartlett, the Bartlett area to become kind of a central hub for those locations to come together, to consolidate some of, some of our, our locations.
And I think one of the trustees asked, what about wintertime? What, what kind of activity would we expect in the winter?
Sure. We, we do do snow removal in the winter. We're, we're a strict commercial landscape and snow removal company. We do a lot of HOA Town Home Complexes. A lot of our winter operations are direct report. We keep equipment on a lot of those sites. So winter, you know, there'll be some ins and outs in the yard when snow is active. But for the most part, our equipment goes out in the morning, returns at night. It's not, it's not a constant storage yard. Stuff's moving. And we run, you know, we run typical landscape trucks and snow removal trucks, salt trucks, whatnot.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's a good spot for a business like that, right next to the IDNR.
Yeah. I can, I can tell you that I remember 2003 when we started, when we looked at this.
A little closer to your mic. Everybody can hear you.
I remember in 2003 when we looked at this, I was on the Plan, Planning Commission at the time. And the, the concept that we had then, that area is totally, it's, it's all changed. I mean, the original concept we had, that's 20 years ago. And that area is, is really growing. And it, the concept that we had then, it's basically changed. I looked at the building that you have here. I looked at the number of trucks, and I was concerned about the storage in the wintertime, which has been answered. I don't have an issue with this at all. I think it's a good plan, and I'd like to see it move forward. The other question I have is, if you get approval from the board, how, how long will it take you to construct this and, and move forward and actually start storing equipment? Would it be done, like, by the spring?
So Dean and, and my builders can answer that, but I believe we're looking at a third quarter of 2024 moving, roughly. Is that right?
Yeah.
So it'll be a while.
Yeah, because we're going to have to come back, go through the formal process, design the building, get permits. Probably won't be able to start until the spring.
I would think, okay.
Yeah, but our intent would be to, to move it, to move it forward as soon as weather breaks in spring.
So is the, the information you have here as far as trucks coming in and out, does that incorporate down the road the consolidation of the other locations?
That's correct. Yeah, we worked, we've designed or we're designing this space to incorporate the, the other locations.
Approximately how many feet away from the nearest resident is it?
I'm a GIIIS expert.
Yeah, that, it's tough. Yeah, we can probably, yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head. It's, there, it's across the street. You know, as you, you know, the south wind extends and lines up with Miles Parkway and-
Approximately 300 feet.
Yeah, that's probably a-
To the back of the house, from the, the front of the building.
Is there, is there a fence along that north side in that Kane County area or not?
On the north side?
Along West Bartlett Road?
Yeah.
For the residential-
The housing depart. I know that the other one that's farther west, east, has all that, that huge line of fence.
If it is, it's decorative.
There's a four-foot tall fence.
Okay.
I just have a couple quick questions on it. How, how tall is the fence that's going to encapsulate the yard?
Six, yeah. Well, we'll meet whatever the ordinance is. I think they're either six or eight, yeah.
I'm assuming they're a landscaping company, so they're going to have, do their own landscaping. So I'm sure it'll look nice and, you know.
Yeah, there, there was a landscape-
Lot on. It's going to look great.
It'll look fantastic. No, there, there was a landscape, yeah, there's the plan right there.
I can give you guys some pictures of my own home. I'm a little bit of a public defender. Yeah, and our, our intent would be to, to really dial it.
I was happy to see that the building doesn't look like a tilt wall brick building or a block or a precast building. It has windows and it has a facade on it that actually has a little bit more of a-
Right.
-commercial, not industrial look. And it's set back from the street quite a bit. I kind of, I think that-
Yeah. We, we may, we may move that to the, to the south and eliminate one of the rows of parking because he, he has a lot more parking than he probably needs. It still will meet the ordinance, so it'll shift a little bit to the south. And obviously, we'll bring, you know, that plan will be, you know, presented.
And hopefully the eagle doesn't come back.
So far, so good.
Well, if the board has no further discussion on this, we can send it back-
Send it on.
-to the Plan Commission.
Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Committee of Economic Development Committee Chairman Ganzie?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items. The first one is a BETA application for ESA's Venezuelan restaurant. ESA's Venezuelan restaurant is expanding into Bartlett Town Center to open their second location, their existing one in a small strip center in Hanover Park. Owners Luisa Estrada and Carlo Escalona have been seeking a second location and have found downtown Bartlett to their liking. Economic Development staff worked with them and encouraged them to open this location in the lone remaining vacant restaurant space in the village. Their build out and renovation costs total $50,227 and includes improvements to the ceiling, counter, plumbing, new and used equipment, fire suppression, signage, and other associated costs. Staff is recommending a grant in the amount of $17,000, which amounts to 34% of the renovation cost. The EDC reviewed the request at its August 14 meeting and unanimously recommended in favor of that amount. The owners require translation assistance so their general contractor, Johan Melvestudo, provides that service for them while handling business-related items. And I believe they are open now, so we can-
Are they open now?
Mm-hmm.
Hello, good evening. My name is Johan. Miss Luisa, Mr. Carlos. The owners of the ESA Venezuela Food Restaurant. We are here for, you know, trying to answer the question about what is the, the goal of the business and the position that we are trying to get in through in this location. Like this, try to, you know, understand what is the, the intention of the business in this area specifically, like Bartlett. And I will try to, the owners to communicate what you need to know about it, okay?
You'd have a much better chance of getting approved if you'd have brought some empanadas.
Yeah, well, last time we bring someone. Right now we-
I'm good with this. I've looked through it.
I just have one question. How long has the restaurant been open in Hanover Park?
Okay, one second. One year and a half.
And you're going to keep both locations open?
Yes.
Okay.
I've had, I've had your food, and it's fantastic.
Thank you.
I, my question, though, is I believe for our legal, for our attorney. Does the application, my understanding is the owners do not speak English. Is that correct?
Yeah, they don't speak English at all.
Does the application and the proposals need to be in a Spanish language for them from a liability point of view?
Not necessarily. If they're going to be signing off on it, the obligation is on them to make sure that they do their own due diligence and go through and read it and understand it. So they would have their own interpreter or their own legal counsel go through and be able to explain it to them in Spanish. So I don't see any liability on behalf of the village.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
So I've been in there once. It looks very nice. Do you plan on, is there a liquor license or gaming?
Well, they are trying to get the liquor license, but they are only trying to spend liquors. They say the customer that's going through the restaurant can get some drink, nothing like a gaming and stuff like this. It's going to be only for, you know, enjoy family, and, you know, people and friends that want to get some good time in one restaurant in the area.
Fantastic. That's all I have?
Yeah.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll review, review the application request and the, for, to the next Village Board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right, let me get down to this.
Will I answer last?
Yes.
Four minutes.
The second item is the Lake Street TIF eligibility report. Village Board approved a not-to-exceed contract agreement with Tusco Associates at its June 6, 2023 meeting. The scope of services is for Tusco to complete all phases of the creation of a new tax increment financing TIF district along Lake Street. Tusco has completed its initial project review and eligibility report and has found that the area does indeed qualify as a TIF district under the conservation area designation where 50% or more of the structures within the project area are 35 years old or older, and where the presence of three or more eligibility characteristics are found to be significant and reasonably distributed throughout the project areas. In this instance, greater than 90% of the buildings exceed 35 years in age, and they found more than three eligibility characteristics, including dilapidation, deterioration, excessive vacancies, lack of community planning, and probably, probably relative decline in EAV. Staff is bringing this item to the committee to keep it apprised of the progress in this important project, redevelop a portion of the Lake Street corridor, and to seek the go-ahead to continue with the next phase of preparing a redevelopment plan, which was estimated to cost $10,500. TIF adoption costs an additional expenses amount to an additional $6,000. This has all been budgeted for accordingly. Lee Brown, President of Tusco Associates, will be present to answer any questions. Lee?
Good evening. I'm Lee Brown, and I'm President of Tusco Associates. And we've been providing planning assistance to the village since 1982. This is an informational meeting. We're not asking for you to take any action. We wanted to bring you up to date on the status of the eligibility and next steps. I know many of you are quite familiar with TIF, but I wanted to go over it briefly so that the public follows along on how this works. Tax increment financing is an economic development technique that allocates future property taxes from a designated area to pay for project improvements within that area. Projects last for up to 23 years. Overall purpose is to eliminate or prevent blight through redevelopment, to promote economic development consistent with the comprehensive plan, and to enhance the village's tax base. We hope to create what's called a virtuous cycle. And that is a, a cycle that starts in one point, builds on itself, and reacts over and over again to increase the value of properties. It most often starts with public investment that encourages private investment. That private investment increases the value of property. That increased value of property pays more taxes, which are collected specifically to benefit only the properties within that tax increment district. As it goes around and round, we build more value, more vitality in the district, and we improve the overall value of the community as a whole. This is a chart that explains over a period of time, and time is the scale at the bottom, over a period of time with values increasing over time, the collection of value over a base that is determined in the year of the adoption of the district. Those increases in taxes that are paid because private investors invest in their property with new buildings or more uses, that increase in value is collected and is available to use for eligible projects within the TIF district itself. We'll go over what eligible projects can be. The example here says that if the existing value of a property within a tax increment district was $100,000 in equalized assessed value, and if there was an increase on that project, a massive construction and new use of $1 million in EAV, the new EAV at that point during the process would be $1.1 million. When it first, when the adoption of the district occurred, it would have been paying $12,375 a year in taxes. If that $1 million increase in value is, was to occur, you would see $136,125 paid in taxes annually on that increase. And overall, the difference between what was paid in the beginning and annual basis would be $123,000 in taxes available to make payments or to construct public improvements, or to assist in private developers improving their properties. This is the area that we are studying. The red line being a boundary. You see Lake Street running in the diagonal from northwest to southeast. This is Oak Avenue. The area includes a considerable portion of properties that are owned by the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that were collected at the time for an anticipated Elgin-O'Hare Expressway and the connection or ramps to that expressway. It sits farmed, but not developed. It also includes a retail plaza at Oak Avenue and Lake Street. It includes two schools, and includes additional properties along Lake, or access along Lake Street, including an undeveloped property that has been proposed at various times for development. It also includes a triangle right here that sits outside the village itself. It's, it's unincorporated. It is not within the village boundaries. Unless or until that were to be annexed, it can't be in the TIF district. And so one of the questions that we'll have, hopefully some discussion on tonight, is in terms of timing, whether or not the village should take the time to negotiate with those property owners to encourage them to annex to the community so that they could become part of the TIF district and benefit by the TIF district. Without that, we would have to exclude them and potentially add them at a later time.
I have a quick question. So we have the, meet the eligibility. How do you determine probability of success?
A probability-
The probability of success of doing this TIF.
Well, history to begin with. There are 1,200 some odd TIF districts in the state, and they break into two general categories. Those that are driven by a specific project that was brought to the community before the TIF was created, and those that were established in order to encourage redevelopment of individual, individual properties. This is a situation where the eligibility is based in part on physical conditions that exist on these properties, on, on the, the lack of increases in value over time, on things like vacancy and other reasons that they don't, they don't maintain their value, and they are relative to the rest of the village declining in value. It also includes properties that are just not the most attractive. And this is an entry area into the village that we think is very important for it to be enhanced in order to present the right character of the village itself. If there is no private reinvestment in property, we will not have dollars available to encourage development. Lake Street is doing quite well to your east. Properties are redeveloping, and economic development has occurred. These properties, in some cases, are divided in ways that don't support common contemporary development, and we would suggest that if we could assemble them into more rational sites, they might develop. The village would have the ability through the TIF district to encourage, through assistance, financial assistance or public improvements, additional development on these sites. One important thing, we will never encourage you to get too far in advance of the development itself. We're not going to suggest to you that you invest massively in public improvements that are not likely to encourage specific development. Many communities, and, and Bartlett being one of them, have often used what's known as the pay-as-you-go plan, which says, we'll assist individual developers on properties that will increase their value, and when the increment comes, it pays back our improvements, rather than massively invest in public improvements, utilities, et cetera, and, and incur debt that could have to rely on future development to pay, pay it off. We go forward and say that the, ultimately, we will be bringing to you, if you give us the go-ahead to move forward with this, we will be bringing to you a redevelopment plan. Those state what the village would do to encourage development. List of things that are required by the Act, but fundamentally, it will include the boundaries of the TIF district, the, the current equalized assessed value of properties, the anticipated equalized assessed value if development occurs, and we look at a site-by-site basis what that might be, and the budget that would be available to make improvements. We'll show you that in a later time, but the budget essentially creates a cap over which you can't exceed without going back to the public for approval. This process is specifically laid out, very detailed, in terms of its timing and the steps that need to be taken before it becomes available as a TIF district. And we'll go over that in, in just a second. But ultimately, the Village Board has to make a finding that if it weren't for the TIF, if we don't put this TIF in place, development, development will not occur. That's the but-for test. But for TIF, this will continue along the same pattern as it has been, and that is a, essentially, loss of value and loss of activity. You have an initial report that we're calling a, a draft, and I'll explain why. We like to take this in at least two steps. The first step says, do we think it, it meets all of the standards that the state has put in place for eligibility? We bring that to you and suggest that it does, and encourage you to take the next step, which is to establish that redevelopment plan. If it didn't meet the eligibility, we would say, stop, don't go forward. So we have five, at least five of the characteristics. There are 13 characteristics that we examine. You need to put in place at least three, or you need to document at least three of the characteristics for it to be eligible. In this case, we documented dilapidation, deterioration of physical improvements, excessive vacancy of properties, a lack of community planning, which is a technical term related to when your first comprehensive plan was put in place, and whether or not these properties developed without that plan, and then ultimately the decline or relative decline in equalized assessed value. That one's pretty important, and we're, part of the reason we're in draft mode is that Cook County and its infant- Cook County, in its infinite wisdom, has delayed the determination of the overall EAV for the village itself. It's doing that until it has said, December 1, it's going to release those data. When we look at the statutory requirements for this one characteristic, decline or relative decline in EAV, we're allowed to look at five years in its past for the value of the properties within the TIF district compared to the village as a whole and compared to consumer price index. If three of the five years, you see an actual reduction in value or a relative reduction in value, then it's another eligibility characteristic. Now, we've already shown four, so we know that the area is eligible, but we like to document all of these. Until December 1, when the overall EAV for the village is authorized, determined, and complete, we won't know what the final year is. The chart shows that in the increase in value of the village between 2017 and 2018, there was a 1.74% increase in the village's overall EAV, shown here, compared to a negative 1% in the area that we're studying. Again, in 2021, that area we're studying was a negative decline, an actual decline in EAV compared to the village as a whole, which was increasing at 4.7% actual. The village as a whole in the, in the taxing year 2022 increased at, excuse me, this is a, this is a consumer price index number. The, we don't have yet a village number for the village as a whole. We know that the area in question has increased by 1.37%. We expect that the village increased at a faster rate and therefore presents the third year out of five. This is a list of eligible project costs. I would characterize it as first and foremost, it lets you create plans, study properties, make sure that the intent for redevelopment can be followed in the future. It allows for financially buying or improving properties for public improvements, whether they be underground or on-site. It allows for public works and financial costs, for the cost of other taxing jurisdictions to be recovered, and for the developer interest costs during the process of redeveloping a site. It's a bunch of different tools that are available to the village that are explained and projected and go along with a budget in that document. It's important to recognize that, I'm sorry.
Could you go back to the next slide? Last slide? So if, if I'm, in the year 2019, the percent change of EAV for the project area?
Was 36.23%.
Increase.
Increase.
But the village as a whole was a 6%.
Only had a 6% increase. Right. Meaning that?
That area?
Properties in this area probably changed hands, and therefore, there was a reassessment of individual properties. It does not make you, it does not make the area ineligible just because that one year it didn't decline. Again, you need three out of the five years, five most recent years to have that relative decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Oops, I wanted to go back. Sure, you can read that. This is a, this is a detailed, step-by-step requirement that the village will go through and that we will guide you through, but it's most important to recognize, I will tell you what it says. It says that the steps in the beginning are determination of eligibility and the determination of what the plan would say we would do. That is brought ultimately to the Joint Review Board, which is a body made up of all the other taxing bodies, including the village, to evaluate whether or not eligibility and the plan are consistent with the, with the statute. They make a recommendation. Then it goes to a public hearing, and after the public hearing is closed, then you have a minimum of 14 days and not exceeding 90 days before you were able to adopt it. The reason for that many lines of steps is that each and every step of notice and public awareness and intervening public discussion of this makes this a very transparent step, a very transparent process that the public should be aware of before the day that you would vote on it ultimately. So to wrap up, a couple of things to remember. Tax increment financing is not a tax. It does not lay on top of the existing properties an additional tax. It is not a tax freeze, which is to say, an individual property owner within the taxing jurisdiction, if their value goes up, they will pay more taxes. This is not freezing anybody's tax. What it does is allocate where the increase is over what's being paid right now, where those can be spent and how they can be spent. TIF uses public investment to leverage greater private investment. If we can't get private investment, this is not a success. This is not a tax system by which you only make public improvements to benefit the public as a whole. It has to be used to increase value of property. And then ultimately, unlike other economic, economic development tools, the tax rates are the same whether inside or outside of the TIF district, which is to say, you will pay the same property taxes whether you are inside the district or outside of the TIF district. An identical house on an identical property or an identical business on an identical property, inside or out, is paying the same taxes. That's based on where the taxes and how the taxes are used, not how much is available.
Great, thank you, Lee. Are there any other questions?
I have several. So if, if we're halfway, we're over 15 years into this, and this district is not developing the way we had anticipated, can we get out of this or do we have to roll on with it?
The, the statute says a maximum of 23 years, but many municipalities close the districts early when their, either their debt or their responsibilities are paid for. If there is no increases in the, if there are no projects and no encumbrances on the village to pay for improvements or anything like that, the statute actually says you have to close the district early. So we only make this available for the 23 years with the anticipation that it takes time to collect the revenue that is able to pay for public improvements. And the magic of 23 years was that it was, is essentially, the first three years were getting it in place, potentially, the first project occurs, and the, remember that the taxes don't get paid for a period of time afterwards, and then municipalities often budgeted for a 20-year bond or a 20, 20-year investment that would be paid off over that period of time.
Using our branding consultant to get some interest in the area during those three years? Using our branding consultant to get interest in the area during those three years?
So there's no assumption that you would incur debt to do this. If we do this right, we're making use of the developer's own money to make improvements that will pay the, pay back the developer. Many communities are finding that notes rather than bonds allow for the developer to put up the money and get paid back over that 23-year period.
So in the beginning of your presentation, the increase in the, the taxes, okay, from the base to the increase, is set aside to be allocated for the different developers and projects? That my?
It is a, it is required to be placed in a separate fund. That separate fund can only be used for eligible expenses and those expenses within the budget that you set in the document itself.
So how is it determined which, if you've got two or three developments happening at the same time, how is it determined which allocations go to which project?
Village board makes the decision. No expenditures are made without your approval. Essentially, most communities do that through an ordinance or another, or in some cases, resolution, but essentially, we leave that to the village attorney. But you get to decide. The property owners don't get to decide. It is up to you to determine whether or not that's a project you want to support.
Can we go back to the slide that had the, the unincorporated section that's?
The, the map itself?
The map, right.
Sure. Let's see if I can get it a little bit bigger. So the, the area that I'm talking about is right here.
So this, oops. Sorry, I was trying to zoom in on that. So the, the street that's, Lake Street is the diagonal street, right? So the street that's going?
This is Oak.
That's is Oak. So this is the little shopping center that's got like?
The shopping center on the corner is in the?
Right next to it. All right. There's nothing on, actually, that land, is there?
There's buildings that are on.
You have the tarot card, the old tarot card place?
No, this is west of that. This was like an old hot dog stand.
Can we get another?
There's a billboard. There's a couple abandoned buildings.
Yeah.
Very small.
That's part of the, yeah. Do we know who owns it?
Probably the bank.
Right, we've, we've been communicating with their agent.
Isn't that, wasn't it previously a gas station?
Hmm.
No, I don't think so.
Years ago, it was a hot, there was like, you remember?
It was a hot dog.
It was a hot dog stand there.
Yeah.
It's been used for used car sales at different points, but?
It's not in good shape, and it doesn't look very good.
I thought it was.
It's a place to camp, I think.
Right, okay.
You show a triangular piece across Route 20. Is that something you're trying to encompass into this plan?
That's within the village. To the extent that it might capture increment, meaning that it might get developed, to the extent that we can provide assistance in some form, whether that be extending the sidewalks along Lake Street or something like that, the, the statute essentially requires the district to include those properties that benefit by the district, that those properties that are eligible and which would potentially generate increment to encourage the development. So we thought it made sense to include all the property on that side of Lake Street.
Because you have another property, it looks like at Bartlett Road on the north side of Lake Street?
Here, there's an abandoned gas station. A former gas station and a wooded lot.
Isn't that where the apartment buildings are, though?
The apartment buildings, I think that you're thinking of is this.
Yeah. Bartlett Lake, what is it called? Bartlett Lake?
Lake Estates.
Yeah.
Was there a reason those were excluded, the apartments?
The apartments are outside the village. I believe that they're, are they not in Stream?
Within the village.
Within the village.
Okay, well, they're occupied. The site is reasonably well-maintained. They don't contribute to eligibility from a physical standpoint, and I don't know that you're going to see substantial increases in the value of that, whether they would be included or not.
Is there enough land to be redeveloped that is encompassed in this red outline? Because we know the school districts can't be redeveloped, that land. So I'm just curious if it's desirable redevelopment based off of that. And then also, the other question I have is, the Oak, the lighting up of the Oak in Bartlett Road, last part of the road, I believe it is, how does that play into that with
Village staff has had recent discussions with IDOT directly. Part of the reason to have that discussion is to consider whether or not any of the parcels that they have, which some might consider surplus if they're not going to build the, the highway as it was originally anticipated, whether that could be returned to, as an opportunity for development. That is to be determined. The property is eligible with and without it. We'd like to include it on the potential for it to be returned for an improvement. Particularly, I think the corner at Oak and Lake offers a considerable redevelopment opportunity. It's undeveloped now. The plant, the comprehensive plan called for Oak Street to be relocated so that it connected through that area, which would allow almost a consolidation of the retail opportunity at that, that area. No, the school district is not being proposed for development. However, it provides contiguity to properties to the west, excuse me, to the east. Without the school property, we may not be able to include these areas for development in the TIF district. We've had discussions with the school district, and they are, they understand what we're addressing. I would give you an example, several, several communities, including the city of Chicago and some of my other clients, have always included schools in their TIF districts because the statute allows you to assist the school district with site improvements, if they are necessary. So improvements could be made on a school property. If there is increment available for making a public improvement, they could be a partner on this.
Is Tom leased that, Tom Stan leased that from IDOT or does he own that?
It's leased from IDOT.
Well, there's probably not a week that goes by where I don't get a comment from a resident about how much blight is from Park Boulevard to Route 59.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think this is, would be a great opportunity, and like you mentioned, this isn't something that's going to happen overnight, but in 23 years, it could actually be something. So.
Well, we know that, that there's getting some momentum on Lake Street because all the new car dealerships bring traffic.
Yeah.
And the more traffic that comes, the more businesses that want to be stones throw away from there, so.
Henover Park, Lake Street and Bartlett Road area, that, was that developed with
I'm not certain.
It's a TIF, yeah.
Well, we've had?
Park section of Lake Street, where you have like the enhanced lighting, yeah.
Historically, we've had one extremely successful TIF, two actually, and one that just fedded along for the longest time and nobody ever used it. So we've had experience on both sides of it. It really doesn't matter when you establish a TIF zone, it's more of who you can bring in versus who's there now, because the people that have obviously owned this land forever don't have the money to develop it or they would have done it a long time ago. So it's more of an attraction for new businesses, an attraction for, hey, we've got this zone, look what you can put up here. Did they, did you ask about the TIF along Lake Street in Henover?
I did, I asked if it was a TIF, and they said yes.
I think it was, yeah. It's probably got another 15 years or so, because that was a while ago.
It was a while ago.
That's why you saw those businesses going up. The Starbucks, the, all of that.
You just have to find a way to keep Tom's carved out there.
Well, yeah, we'll build them a little shack.
I have one last question. What constitutes continuity between two areas of land?
Contiguity?
Yeah.
More than a, more than a touching. That is a matter of case law, and I'll let Kurt speak to that, but essentially, two properties have to be physically touching and have a, enough area or enough boundary between them to constitute a contiguous property. You can't jump, you can jump rights-of-way, you can jump forest preserves, but you can't jump from one site to another that is separated by, by property that is not directly contiguous to it.
They have to be adjoining.
They have to join.
So, so let me ask you, staff, a question about this triangle, the mysterious triangle. What is our timing on something like that?
If we get the applicant to submit a petition for annexation, we've done annexations in about four to six months.
Okay. Okay.
But we still have to wait for the
And
I'm sorry.
Just one follow up. IDOT, what was our last gut feeling on that?
Uh, we asked IDOT, we began the formal process for their evaluation. They told us their evaluation can take anywhere up to 18 months. But I don't feel that that should be an impediment to our process.
Yeah, there's enough other places that can get developed versus that little, that area. They've got to have at least 20 acres there.
I want to say the IDOT right of way local parcel is about 26 acres and these other two parcels, I believe are about nine total. So we're looking at about 35 acres.
And we still have to wait for Cook County to finalize their EAV for the village.
It would be helpful, but we have established eligibility even without that one criteria, which is the EAV criteria. It just further cements the fact in the public's mind that this is an eligible area. I think that one of the things that I've discussed with staff is the potential for allowing the staff to have the conversation with the property owners before we essentially have a go no-go on whether or not they're likely to want to annex and be part of this district. We can present all kinds of good reasons for them to choose to annex to the community. I would rather not finalize the eligibility study and the redevelopment report until we've come to the conclusion that they are or are not. It's just a matter of documentation works better if we can make that. And so I'm suggesting that if you allow staff to have those discussions, then we can ultimately create the map and the documentation that makes certain that this is ineligible and we'll move forward.
I think the alternative to just leaving it as is 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 just not possible at this stage. So I think everybody up here is ringing the same bell.
Sounds good.
So what we would like to do, we have informed the school district that we are endeavoring for the TIF district, the state as well. And now we would, and we have just done some broad strokes with the owner of the triangle piece's broker. We would like to initiate a for real conversation with them about whether or not they would be interested in annexing to
Charge ahead.
Yes, sounds good.
Charge ahead. And I think, I think one of the things that we should one of the things we really need to do is everybody on this board needs to know what they want that to look like, that whole corridor. So that's, that's important. Have more meetings.
All right, so it sounds like we're all
Christie, you can draw up a little map and show us what it would look like, Candyland, the whole thing, the whole deal.
Water park.
And Tuckett's for sale after Hurricane Lee.
Let's do Water Park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, Chairman Gansey. Entertained and motion adjourned.
So moved.
My trustee, Danny, second of my trustee Gunstein, with a court please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
I'm sorry, yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
One more quick question. Do you want to go to that?